I'd like to call to order the April 18th, 2023 special called board meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to approve the agenda for the April 18th, 2023 special called board meeting.
Is there a second? The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? As there's no discussion, board members, please vote. Okay, the motion is correct. Board members, please vote. Ms. Counsel, I believe that Dr. Scott needs to vote with her hand. So those in favor? Okay, I have, I vote in the affirmative too, please. I don't have the join the meeting. Let me refresh. Okay, so the vote is six yes and there's one not present. Mr. Trapp is not here with us yet this evening. So the motion carries. May I have a motion to go into executive session, please? Mrs., can you speak into your microphone, please? I'm struggling to hear you. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I move that we go into executive session for contractual matters regarding the superintendent's search.
Is there a second? The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Dr. Scott to convene an executive session for the discussion of contractual matters regarding superintendent's search. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. And the motion is correct. Mr. Trapp, we're voting to go into executive session. So you may, if you'd like to use a hand vote, you may do so. All those in favor that are using their hands, please raise in the affirmative. Those no. And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. The board will now convene an executive session. May I have a motion to reconvene an executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move that we adjourn the executive session at 5:15 PM and that we reconvene in regular session.
Is there a second? The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Dr. Scott to reconvene in, or to adjourn executive session and reconvene in our special called meeting. Is there any discussion? And the motion's correct? All right, board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Item four, voting on executive session items. There are no votes today. Moving on to item five, new business, no action requested. 5.1, budget work session. Dr. Miley?
Good evening, everyone. I've got three things on your, on your tables for your review. We can, you can review them tonight or at your leisure. One of them, I thought since several of you have not been through this process before, included last year's final product, so that you can kind of get an idea of where we're headed. This is the goal of getting to this document completed for the FY 2324. We have a long way to go, but it'll, it'll get here pretty quickly. I'll get to that in just a minute. But, so there's not a whole lot of information here that we need to discuss unless you see something you want to discuss. But this is the budget that we're currently operating on, and this is the end product that we hope to get to in the next 30 days or so. Second, you have a document that a board member asked for a list of all the budget requests from all the departments and school sites, et cetera. And so that document is in this document. It's every request we've received so far. We have not reviewed them all, and we have not prioritized them. But they're listed, and you can see of all the departments and all the elementary schools, high schools, et cetera, and these are the requests and the estimated cost of these requests from all, from all of our departments. So we can review that, you can review that at your leisure. Again, they, and their descriptions, and we can give you more detail if you'd like, but they're, they are not vetted yet, and they have not been prioritized. So the order you see them, it's not that, they may be the most important one on the first one, but it's by, just listed and not prioritized. And the final thing is on, that's on your desk, is the one that I'd like to read you tonight, and it's our budget update. Before I go on, are there any questions about these other two documents? If you have trouble sleeping, this document here with the list of requests ought to solve that quickly at any time. So tonight, I'd like to start off with a review of where we are from the last time we, we were here. The last time I was here was the 4th, I believe, April the 4th with the budget update. And we know a lot more now with certain areas, especially the House. The House is finished. We know a little bit more about the Senate, but I wanted to go over some of the information that we've got gathered so far. This information on the first slide is the same information that we presented last time. The only thing, the only update is that the state has proposed that we reach a state minimum salary schedule of $50,000 within four years. We're at 42.5 now. If implemented by the, the $2,500 increase this year, we're right at 4,200, 42.5, and so that would be an increase of $7,500 over four years. That's the goal, based on the economy and the revenues at the state level. That should be attainable by the state. Hopefully, they would allocate that back out to the districts, but it is, I think it's an attainable goal. The next thing is, we've got several options. The state, backing up just a second. If the state does implement the $2,500 minimum increase to the state minimum salary schedule, we're already above the current salary schedule, state minimum. And so what that would do is we would need to raise ours. But state law, as written right now, requires us to only raise our minimum salary by $679, not the $2,500. If you remember, those of you who were here last year, and even if you weren't on the board, you probably heard about it in the community, because the governor and the legislature started talking about a $4,000 raise. And that was discussed, it was publicized, and everyone was expecting a $4,000 raise at every cell in the salary schedule. That never happened, and it wasn't funded. Yes, some of the districts that were very low and far below the state minimum did receive some larger salaries, but as you know, our district was well above the state minimum, and so it never was planned that way. So what we want to be sure of is making clear that, okay, the state's talking about a $2,500 increase. We may not get funded to do that. We may have other options. And so this next slide is to show you, these are similar to the ones we discussed last year, of options that, given the flexibility and the funding level we have, we may be able to implement beyond what the state minimum is requiring. For instance, we could give a $2,000 increase per cell, since we're above the state minimum already. That's about a $6.1 million cost to our, to our district. We could, instead, we could do a 2% increase to all teacher sales, and that would be about a $3.2 million increase. Those aren't in this, that's not in our budget right now. These are things that, these are options that we can discuss, and when we get to the point of having a revenue picture, that's what we don't have right now. This document is about $11 million of budget requests. Right now, we don't have the total revenue picture in terms of what our limits are in terms of our funding. But here, these are some options. We looked at some options for instructional aids last year. If you remember, we had an increase in, in the budget, as you can see from the old budget document, of a 2%, a 2% step and then a 3% increase. So the teacher instructional aid's got a 5% increase. That was about a $740,000 budget impact to us. But those are some options that we can consider. It's not an exhaustive list. There, obviously, there are other options, but that gives you an idea of some of the options that we may have in terms of implementing some kind of pay raise and the resulting cost to our budget. Speaking of, of that revenue picture, I've actually get ahead of myself here on one of the slides. The last time I was here was April the 4th, and we talked about the next step being the Senate. Well, the Senate's already, they're moving faster than, moving about as fast as they used to back five or 10 years ago, but they've already given the budget bill a second reading, and they're talking about giving third reading next week. That'll be the fastest that I remember in the last four or five years, certainly before the pandemic, which will be great. Hopefully, it'll be a good budget, but either way, it'll give us plenty of time to take that budget number, have a firm revenue picture of what we have available and what we can fund, given the Senate and House. Hopefully, they will be close this year. And again, one of the things that, if you remember last year, one of the difficult things about getting our budget together was frequently, the House and Senate aren't exactly the same, but for most of my time here, they've been off a million or two or something like that. Last year, they were off $8 million to, I mean, $8 million to us. And so that's a big difference, and we hope that they will be a little bit closer together this year. This, it's, hopefully, it's bigger on your screen and in your handout. This is an estimate of some of the costs that we already know are out there in terms of what the district will be looking at in terms of either mandated by the state or mandated by us, not mandated, but contractually mandated. For instance, some of the time, people talk about, well, are people, are we going to give a step increase? Well, if you look at a, if you look at a salary schedule and a person gets hired on that salary schedule, they're, that's almost a contract that if I work here another year, I'm going to get that raise. That's a step raise. So some people talk about it, that is a discretionary decision, but in fact, it's pretty much, we consider it, we're required to do it for teachers unless the state passes a law that tells, tells us not to do it. So for instance, we're going down here, the third line is a teacher salary step increase for eligible employees. Again, that's not mandated by the state, but it's mandated, well, the teacher, excuse me, the teachers is, is mandated by the state. And we've got a state, state bus driver mandate of a 25% increase. One of the things that we talked about last time was the state was going to do a 20% increase, but then a $2,500 adjustment to the salary schedule. They decided that was way too complicated and cumbersome, so they just passed, and they amended it to a 25% increase to the salary schedule for bus drivers, which is a great, I mean, we all agree that the bus drivers need that kind of increase, as we've discussed and other times in other categories where we've given increases. It's great, but it also creates some inequities about some other categories of employees. So it's great news for the bus drivers. It does put pressure and on other categories that may not have gotten that 25% increase. But we're not going to turn it down, and of course, we encourage, we're real excited about that. However, if all, one of the things we do is we compete with other districts, and so all the other districts are getting the same 25% increase, so it's a, it's a never-ending process. But good news is we have that, hopefully, the state will fund us, fund us enough to, so that we have those funds. The blue line, the first blue line, this is one of the things we talked about when we agreed and voted to have the signing bonus for both classified and, for certified teachers and non-certified, was that we, if it's not adopted in our budget, we have enough funds to do it for this year. If we don't adopt it in our budget, we'll have to figure out a way to pay for it next year or abandon it. But, so we're listing it as kind of a contractual agreement that's already been agreed to. So that's why it's in blue. We have several other contractual, whether it's support, I mean, it's support services, whether it's groundskeeping, custodial, or others. We've estimated about a million dollar increase there. And then the green ones are when we, this district has historically, if the teachers get a step, we give a 2% step increase to all employees. We try to do that. Some of the years, it's been a struggle for, as far as funding goes, but that's why we list those as kind of a prior obligation. It's not written in law, but of course, we've been doing it for a long time, and we all agree that the teachers are extremely important, but everybody else in that building helps make it happen and are important too and are deserving as well. The last two are a little bit more complicated and less straightforward. We had the same issue last year. If you'll excuse me just a second. I guess I could complain if that wasn't the superintendent's phone. But it, we used to call, used to call it the shell game, because what the legislature would do is they would talk about increasing funding and, and whether it was the EFA or some other line item, but then they would collapse another line item, an EIA line item, and defund that. So yes, this line item would increase, but this line item, we lost. They did that last year for almost two and a half million dollars. They eliminated the at-risk funding. What they did is they took that pot of money and put it in the distribution, in the pool to distribute to across all districts. Great, that helped that go up, but it meant that those people that we were paying with those funds had to be shifted to the general fund. They've done it, two, two more line items this year, and it's a career specialist who we use some of those funds to help us pay for career specialists. Career specialists are all on general fund, funding, but they are supplement, these funds help us supplement those, and the same thing with nurses. The nurses are all paid by general fund. There's no, there's no issue about losing any, no one's losing their job, but it's a finance issue in terms of funding those nurses, and that's one of those things that, again, if you ask the state, oh, well, we moved those funds over to increase that line item, well, that didn't really help us the last time much. But again, those are some costs that we've identified, and, and the rationale of why they're on this list, whether they're mandated by the state or prior obligations or contractual. As you can see, that's about $12 million of those things. We haven't gotten included, not included in that, is other increases. We're not, we don't have the teacher increase in here. The, the $2,500 one that we may or may not have to fund, fund the whole, implement the whole thing. That would need to be added. That's not in here. If we do a $2,000 per cell, that's another $6 million, and if we do a non-teacher salary increase of 2%, that'd be another $800 million, so $800,000. My point of doing all this is, this page, we come up to about $19 million, and we haven't gotten to a budget request yet. Okay? So it's, we're hoping that the, the state Senate and the House fund us adequately, but we may have, you know, they're all important, so that's the job that we have to do, is prioritize them and decide which ones are the most important. I put down here just as a reference, last year, we had a pretty good year. I wasn't sure what was going to happen with the new funding formula, but last year, we had about almost $17 million of new, new revenue to spend, and this year, in this page alone, we're looking at about $19 million of expenditures. Again, we don't have that final revenue picture yet. Next, I think I've just about finished this. We've already talked about this, the bus driver, that changed a little bit from the last time we discussed this on April 4th. Again, it's raising the starting salary for our minimum wage, not a minimum wage, our minimum salary schedule for the bus drivers would be right at $20 an hour. And again, hopefully, we will be funded adequately by the state to do that. They always say they are funding it, but some of the time, that's not the same for all districts across the state. The key is, key is that every district is not the same. We've talked about that here. Even our next door neighbor, Richland 1, gets 35% of their total budget from the state. The rest, 65% from property taxes that they're, think of downtown Columbia and the big tax base there. We get 65% of our funds from the state. So anything that the state does is, can have more impact on a district like us than it does on Richland 1, and it's, it's different in just about every district across the state. So it's, it's very difficult to say, oh, that's going to help a school district. Some of the time, it does. It's all meant to help a school, school district, but we'll wait and see. Right now, the last estimate that I have is about eight to nine million dollars in new state funding. Like I said, the Senate is hopefully giving third reading next week. The early estimates from the county are very positive. It looks like we haven't, they haven't given us the final numbers, but we might see an increase with no millage increase, an increase of about $7 million from local revenue, which is the largest one that I remember since I've been here, which will help a great deal to fund those things that are not mandated, are mandated by the state but aren't funded completely. Speaking of local government, we, the kind of the things that we need to do next, an action item that, that you need to, to be aware of, that you'll be making soon, is we need to submit our local millage requests to the county by May the 8th. We don't have enough, you don't have enough, we don't have enough information to do that yet, but we've got several weeks to get that, to that point, and if the Senate finishes up their deliberation next week, we'll have a pretty good idea of our revenue picture. But either way, as you remember, last year, we were in such, the, the difference between the Senate and House versions were so different that if the House had been adopted, we'd been at $8 million, $12 million deficit, and we were trying to make sure we could fund all those things, and we, you approved an increase, a tax increase for a millage increase. Got to the county, the county did not adopt that, we did not have a millage increase, but in that, during that period of time, county revenue estimates did go up during that two or three week period, and we were not, we were not in as bad a shape as we thought, and the House version didn't pass, which was all, all those things were good things, and we ended up with, with a good budget. And the county did not approve a millage increase. For those of you who have not been here before, our millage increase is, is bound by law, the law that was passed in 2006, which is the Act 388. Act 388 not only exempted you from your owner occupied operating millage on your house, but it also set limits on the, on the ability for local governments, cities, counties, and school districts to raise their millage rate. You can, and of course, as you've been all through the School Board Association presentations, they, different districts have different levels of fiscal autonomy. Some, some districts have the full autonomy of when the board votes, that's it. If you raise taxes, they go up. Our district is a, we don't have fiscal authority, so when we adopt a budget, maybe increase taxes or not, or vote to increase taxes, it still goes to county council. They are the ultimate authority to make that pass. Either way, our current capacity for raising millage rates, inflation is a combination of inflation rate, which was 8% last year, according to the Revenue, Office of Revenue and Fiscal Affairs, and our growth was a little over 2%, which gave us about a 10.1% increase in our current millage rate. That equates to 33.7 mil increase in our current taxes. The capacity, that's not, that's not anything that I have anything to do with. I'm just saying that that's the capacity that we have according to Act 388 in terms of our ability and the county's ability to raise that millage rate. We haven't had a millage increase in about four years. Tax base has been growing. State has been behaving and giving us quite a bit of revenue, so we're in pretty good shape. But depending on what we decide on final budget document, looks like the millage rate increase is, you do have the capacity. There's some districts that have, that don't even have that capacity in terms of ability to, to raise their millage rate. Next, the timeline of what we've got. We've got workshop tonight. We need to, we, I think we should, we're hoping to have the first reading at your board meeting on May 9th. That may be if the Senate drags its feet, and, or, or the Senate and House versions are far apart, and that conference committee takes a while and doesn't move quickly, we will, this is our target, May 9th, first reading, May 23rd, the second reading, and then we get in, in line for the school, and to the county for their three readings. Again, that's, that's doable if the Senate moves quickly. It might be more difficult if we don't have a firm revenue number from the state by a week or so before that, May 9th. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or provide any more detail.
Board members' questions?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott?
Dr. Miley, I'm not sure if this is the meeting or if it's at the next meeting. If we wanted you to go back and consider how much it would cost to do a pay raise for our security officers, Ms. McFadden and I had an opportunity to have some conversations with some of our security officers, and it was just like an aha moment to know that some of them are only making $13 and $14. My God, Chick-fil-A pays more than that. And we were also made aware that some of them are leaving working as security officers, going to work for Service Solutions. So how much would it cost to get all of our officers that we have now up to about $20? And if the safety committee, once we take recommendations back to the board to see, you know, their thoughts on metal detectors, we're going to really have to recruit security officers, and we're not going to get anyone with $13 and $14. But my main concern right now is the ones that we have working now, because I am just so embarrassed to have found out that they're making $13 and $14 an hour. So not now, but since you're working on a budget, how can you go back to see, you know, the ones that's making under 20? What would that cost be to get them up to at least 20?
We can do that relatively quickly, not on my feet right now, but that's a legitimate request. We've, we are concerned about that. That's kind of brings back to that bus driver thing.
Right.
One group gets singled out and gets, gets treated appropriately and fairly, and then the other, several other areas aren't. I know that Will Anderson may have that in here, but I don't know whether that is addressed directly in one of your budget requests, but we can.
It is on page four.
Either way, but I think that we can certainly do that. We will, given how much time we have, we can, we probably need to do that for all of those subgroups, because again, as soon as you help one of them, there's another subgroup
That's true.
that is, that is in, is just about a shape.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
I'm not sure what page number it's on, but it, page four? Thanks, Ms. McFadden.
That's if you have page numbers?
But there's, that was starting salary at $15 an hour for the current employees, and then, of course, change in the sales for all those, so the current employees, if they're a step 20. a step 20, whatever, then of course, theirs would be incremental, similar to what we do with the salary schedule. And you'll see for operations and for my colleagues over here, in a lot of those different, we've requested changes in those schedules. But I did not do the 20, but the 20, if that's a request, we can go back. It won't take me very long to go back and find what that number is.
I would love to see 20, because, you know, they can go to Chick-fil-A, and Chick-fil-A tastes much more better than, you know, hanging around, so we want to keep them here. So I'd love to see what amount is.
Agree 100%. Yeah, certainly can do that.
Mrs. Porter.
And my question was with our instructional assistants. I saw that that was a suggestion, but I didn't see it in the planning document for instructional assistants.
It is not. It is not, it is not in, is there one in the request here? Again, I haven't had a chance to read all of it.
It was in this one?
Yes.
But not in the planning?
Again, that was an example of the cost of various options. But we can certainly, I know we did last year, we had a 5% increase, but in a world where there's 8% inflation, 5% salary increase isn't quite adequate. So we can certainly readdress that, and I know that's been a top priority for y'all for several years, as it has been for everybody in the district, but.
At least look at it. I believe the gap is really big, especially when I compared it to the bus driver's salary. It was pretty large.
Yep, I certainly agree. We'll look at that and get a little bit more fine-tuned, broader set of examples of groups of employees.
Board members, any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Miley.
We'll be back. Thank you.
Perfect timing. We're moving on to item six, executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to recess for executive session. Sorry, let me get to that. Sorry, I'm running where we are.
6.1.
6.1, okay. I move to, we recess, recess for, and the board would convene an executive session for.
How about convene an executive?
Convene an executive session for receipt of legal advice, parent grievance, and receipt of legal advice regarding employee contracts.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Was that Mrs. McFadden? Okay. So the motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to convene an executive session for the receipt of legal advice regarding a parent and the receipt of legal advice regarding employee contracts. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mrs. Porter.
I'd just like clarification for 6.3, receipt of legal advice regarding employee contracts. Was that in recommendation from our superintendent?
No, that was at the board request.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? And Mrs. Nash, is the motion cracked up?
I think the only word is just convene. I think we changed it to convene. Sorry, instead of recess.
Recess means we get a break.
Getting a break. Oh, the word. We're convene, recesses recess to be convened. Yeah, just the first line.
I move that we convene, not recess. Yeah, that we convene into executive session. Is that, is that, oh!
It was on the screen, but I thought maybe it was wrong.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, I didn't get to the public. All right. I heard her say, all right. So the motion is correct. Thank you, everyone. And the vote is six yes, one no. The motion carries. May I have a motion to adjourn executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I move that we adjourn executive session at 7:13.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mrs. Nash to adjourn executive session at 7:13. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. Board members, we're going to vote by hand. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move that we adjourn the meeting, the April 18, 2023 special call board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Dr. Scott to adjourn the meeting. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. Board members, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Have a great evening.